... Planning Board Meeting, called to order, and we all rise for a pledge of the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the Secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
[inaudible]
Here.
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 Okay, all the board members should have received the minutes from the Secretary for the February 5th meeting.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made to second to accept the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as the motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding DC Sports renovation.
Good evening. One place to start your life.
Good evening, I'm Ray Van Vorus. We're the architects for the project, Aliskam McCormick Van Vorus. Dan Pizzarelli is the owner. We have addressed, we got their letters from the consultants, H&amp;H, CPL, Dutchess County Planning, and the Fire Department. And last Thursday, I believe, we submitted a letter answering those questions. I think you went over some of them. So, we think we've answered all those questions. They're pretty straightforward. They're on the revised document that's in front of you. There was a couple of comments that were brought up during the workshop. I know I couldn't speak during that workshop, that's hard for me, but I bit my tongue and just listened, took some notes. So, one of the main things was the bulk requirement table is on the drawing now. I think you requested that. You asked about the dimension of the ropes course from the power lines, that's labeled on the drawing as well, as required. Like John said, I think we've answered all his questions. Back to lighting with H&amp;H, we did, and that's also with the Dutchess County comments as well. The lighting is all existing. This ropes course will end at dusk, just like you guys talked about. So, the lights were not required on the ropes course after dark. They're existing. The foot candle and photometric chart is on the drawing. And I think there was a couple of comments that were slightly over on some of the foot candles, so those are just what we can adjust and, you know, just point them down a little bit further. If required, we can, you know, adjust the photometric chart to show that. But we feel it's a very minor issue, and like the county said, it's really kind of up to you at this point now. The lighting is with the lighting that was there. And there's a variety of tall robe trees on the...
On the side. On the side facing, you know, the property, you know, the side of the property, so that blocks it from the south. So, we feel we've met those comments. We've addressed the Fire Department Bureau letter as well, and Dan has met with them as well, and I've spoken to them as too. So, we think we've answered all the questions, and we feel like we're in good shape, but we're here to answer your questions if you have any additional comments.
Okay. All right, has any of the board members have any questions to start with, or?
No.
Everybody's been satisfied with what's...
As long as the professionals are satisfied.
Okay.
So, as we talk about lighting, for context, I know that it's all existing lighting. It is in the proximity of the proposed, I guess it's a three-story structure.
Rope serial course, yes.
Two stories.
Yeah, it's thirty feet, thirty feet high.
So, the, it looks like there's two lights labeled in the proximity, and they're both, you know, I mean, they're floodlights essentially, and they've got, one of them looks like it is a hotspot of twenty-five-foot candles and the other of ten.
Yeah, that's located right in the middle of the site.
Yeah. Sort of angling down.
Ropes courses here, that's back in existence, basically with the bomber boats were down in, and the mini golf, so really, really need to not even light our ropes course. That, what you're talking about now.
The ones, are you talking about the ones in the mini golf?
Yeah, that's the most powerful, because it's so tall, it's got a bigger head on it.
The one head is facing the vulnerable pool, but it's, two heads are on the mini golf, the one is on the backside of the vulnerable pool? We can change that, though. If we get rotated around.
Wouldn't that be good for, like, safety-wise, because there is still going to be a pit there?
Yeah, I mean, my concern, I'm just trying to think of how it is going to play in, I want the site to be lit, but with very strong and intense lighting, you get a lot of shadows being cast by the structure that is now going to be rising up. It's just hard to imagine with the existing lighting, how it's going to play with what is being proposed and what the safest, the simplest answer is going to be.
What kind of lighting is it?
It's an LED light.
LED lights?
Yes, they're not flood, they're, they look like a flood, but they're outshaded, LED lights.
And obviously, the mini golf course has its own lights, right? So, like, if you're walking on the mini golf course, the shadows itself are, they're covered by the little lights?
Yeah.
Right, you're not going to be in that...
Path lights, they have path lights.
At all.
Okay.
Right, and you can't even get to around it, like, we could block it off, so you can't get around the whole of it, because like, there's the island that's in the middle, right? That one shows on the backside of the island.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Right, you're not going to be able to get to it from the ropes course.
And you mentioned that you're not operating the ropes course after dark. What time do the, you know, what time do the other, like, the mini golf course, how late would that be?
The mini golf, it's always open till ten, eleven o'clock at night, depending on, you know, opens more in the summertime, obviously, and then Friday and Saturday is when, you know, it's a little later. But it will be strictly eight o'clock or eight dusk that ropes course is closed.
Yeah.
The lights will stay on, because they're on a timer that shine like over the vulnerable pool, the three existing lights, but they're on now till one in the morning now, just because they're safer with them on.
Okay.
Yeah, none of that's changing. And the ropes course itself is, you know, pretty open, you know, it's just poles, so it's not like a structure that's causing a lot of shadows and shades.
There should be nobody over there, anywhere near it, even on the shadows that it casts, right? Because the mini golf course, as you come off the island, has its own lights all the way, so that structure shouldn't even, even if it does cast a shadow, it's not, it shouldn't matter on the mini golf course.
Okay. How's the board feel regarding the existing lighting?
I don't know how you guys feel with it. I mean, if you turned it, if they turn it down, the heads themselves to prevent it from, you know, casting out further, I mean, I guess that would be helpful in this situation.
Yeah, the only reason why they're up was because we use the vulnerable boats at night.
Yeah.
But now, we're not going to use it, we can turn them down, so it's just on the concrete.
Just to keep it down.
Yeah.
We could, we could deal with that, with the building department, maybe, with the building permit or something like that? I don't know if we need to go a big...
Be a condition, be a condition of the approval. Maybe it's just that they would be turned down, you know...
Yeah, you could go...
To focus directly, right, to focus them straight down as opposed to be angled out.
Sure.
That's all right.
Does that, board feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, it's okay.
Definitely.
All right. Okay.
Like I said, we kind of hustled to get the comments, and we appreciate the consultants and the staff getting these comments to us in a timely fashion. We usually hand them to them as we walk up, so that was nice to get them a few days early. So, I think we've addressed them and, you know, modified the site plan accordingly.
All right. Okay, let's just see what else we... Yeah, they, did you answer that question there with the covering of the concrete? That was the...
Yeah, so like Malcolm, I think, believed I said, in the letter, we talk about it, we're putting a padding down in the astroturf on the bottom part of the bomber boat section itself. All people, I'm not an expert, I'm not from Eclipse Engineering, who's, you know, their liability stamp is on there, so to answer your question, they designed the ropes course, they did a lot of them.
Yeah.
If they're, Danny knows it better, everyone's, you know, harnessed down and touched, there's no, there's no free play up on that thing, so there's all, there's all kinds of extra safety when, you know, people are in there on that course.
Are there notes in the plans or details?
It's on the Eclipse drawings.
In the drawings?
Yes, it's the Eclipse drawing, I understand, it's still by...
No, no, I meant of the proposed astroturf and padding. So, now that you said that, that's what we're going to propose.
Here, I can open the drawing itself, if we add it to the letter. If not, we can add that to that letter.
Yeah, we'll need that on the plans, if that's going to be proposed.
I believe we just get it on the letter.
Okay.
Add it to the drawing, sure.
All right, so I guess that's pretty much the answer to all the questions you had, Malcolm?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, I mean, I think that you addressed in the letter, but just for the record, outdoor PA system, is there an existing one?
There is none.
There is none, and there is not proposed.
None, none. The guys at work will actually have a walkie-talkie saying, "Okay, Jim, send her up for the letter." I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's always going to be one person on the bottom and one person on the ropes course at all times. So, like, they'll be talking back and forth, but it'll only, it'll be through a lot of talking.
Okay. No, I ask, it's a, it's a condition of the special permit.
Yeah.
So, we'll just need to verify.
No.
Okay.
Answer's no, yeah.
All right, so being this is a special use permit, we have to schedule a public hearing for this? Is that correct?
Sorry, is that...
It was special, yes, so we need to schedule a public hearing for this one?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to do that?
Yeah, we're modifying the special permit.
Yeah, it's a special use permit, that's why. So, with that, I mean, it seems like we're pretty much at that point, just to kind of, because really...
I mean, I haven't seen the changes that they have made to the plans. I think that they tried to address as many of my comments as possible. If we can get, you know, not just a note, but like a detail, some description of what the padding that's being proposed is, so that the building department can verify that that, that the padding being proposed, padding being installed, that will address my comments.
Yeah, I think you did get a copy of this, though, right?
Yes, I just have it at a check sheet.
Yeah, just that side, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What does it matter for the padding?
That it's being proposed, and we...
They want to see what it is.
It needs to be on the plans as opposed to just stated in a...
They want that note on the drawings itself.
Yeah.
We want to show detail, you know, what it is.
We need to know what we're inspecting, what we're looking for. We don't have that information.
Our job is to make sure that what's on the plans is what exists in real life.
But I'm just saying, you keep harping on the padding for, it serves no purpose, we're just putting it there to cover the concrete.
Because the users are actually harnessed in, so the...
They won't be coming in.
No, you're not slamming anywhere. You're going to be slowly moving down to the concrete.
They'll be walking on it.
Yeah.
All right, I mean, if it's...
We'll show that note.
Yeah, I, yeah, I get, I mean, what does everybody, what does the board members feel? To put, should he put the padding? Do we feel it's necessary?
I'm going to put the padding regardless, in the pool, I'm just, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, just putting it out on the plan then, at that point.
Right.
It's really not a question of putting it in or not, then.
Right.
It's just a matter of just putting it on the plan.
Correct.
So, we have to, we have to put all this together on the plan anyway, because at the end of the day, that's, you know, that's a legal document that's going to, you know, that's going to document all the changes that you're doing to the site currently.
Okay.
So, you know, that way, down the road, you know, if somebody changes anything, they're going to reference back to this and say, "Well, no, this is what was approved, not whatever's there at some point in the future, in case anything gets, you know, altered." So, with, yeah, so with that, I think that we're at a point, I mean, really, I mean, it's just, he's got to update the plans themselves, right, to physically put it on, but it looks like we've discussed all the items.
I can get it back tomorrow. I'll get them back to be tomorrow, so we'll be ready.
But I think we have to, I think we forgot, the, what would be the first opportunity for a public hearing? So, it would be...
April 1st.
April 1st, yeah.
That's the soonest?
It's by time, do notification, yeah.
If that's the soonest, I guess that's what we'll do, but we're really, we're hoping for a lot.
I know.
Yeah, they can get everything from May 18.
You think so?
Doesn't seem to be much, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, one detail and a couple of notes, definitely. I can get, I'll get it back tomorrow.
So, tomorrow morning, you go to the office, fix it all up, and then you'll be back here tomorrow by noon?
I'll email them tonight to get it going on it in the morning. I could definitely have it there tomorrow, sure.
Okay.
It's a small detail.
Very small.
If we, yeah, if you get everything updated, I guess, if everybody feels comfortable with that, and it's going to meet the requirement, then I think we could do that, which is the, that's what the 18th, correct?
Okay, I'll talk to B., whatever we need, we'll get it in. All right, so, thank you.
All right, so, so we want to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for, for March 18th?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as the motion carries.
All right. Could I ask a, the next question, you know, the engineers and architects, we always push at the envelope a little bit, what is the next steps, I mean, at that, at that point? Can we have a, how long would it take for a resolution to be prepared and all that kind of stuff?
It could be done after that meeting, the following meeting, we could have the resolution...
The two weeks after that meeting, or zero one?
Yeah, yes, that'd be, so the 18th would be the next meeting, and then April 1st would be the meeting after that.
Okay.
And then we could vote on a final resolution, assuming, you know, again, say, the outcome of the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully, they don't fill the room up with people and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, welcome, take care.
Take care.
All right. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is the Subin LLC subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design Engineer for the applicant. We appeared before your board back in January with a conceptual plan for this project. If you remember, Lot 2, to the right, we had a septic system partially located in the town, 100-foot wetland buffer of the existing wetland on the parcel. We were told to go do some homework, so we did. We found a better location for it, it's completely outside the wetland now. That's pretty much the major change that's been since we submitted a full application for this project. We received the consultant's comments, we don't have any issues with them, there's just a couple of points of clarification I'd like to go over. And we're just looking for the board to possibly declare themselves lead agency and possibly set a public hearing for the next meeting.
All right, well, we did discuss that earlier, so I guess we do a coordinated review, so we have to set ourselves as the lead agency. So, at this point, I'll entertain the board for a motion to have the secretary circulate for lead agency, regarding your secret. Okay, so, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as the motion carries, so we'll have that circulated.
Just one question, Chairman, I already got a response from the Health Department.
You're okay.
Does that mean that it's already been circulated?
No, sometimes, sometimes some of the local agencies, when we circulate the plans, when they're submitted, they respond back with that letter. We have no problem with you being lead agency.
Right, okay.
Does not mean that we've circulated...
So, you got the standard letter back, you're talking about the, you know, that you have to go in there and submit for the septic systems with them.
Right, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, they'll probably just give you that same letter again, I guess. I guess it's the other issues that we got to, you know, we're kind of looking into, the, you know, the wetland, and then whatever had shown up on the mapper, I guess, that needs to get addressed. So, with that, now, comes into question regarding public hearing, so we did discuss earlier, so if we circulate, we're not going to have probably a lot of the responses back from those agencies regarding some of the issues. I mean, if we wait the 30 days and do it that way, would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
And we put this off to the first, and hopefully, at that point, we have some.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Does everybody feel comfortable with that? At least I give some of the agencies a chance to respond with the...
Yeah.
With some of the comments. So, with that, April 1st is good?
Yeah.
All right, so entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 1st.
Come over.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So, with the, with the letters themselves, the consultant's letters, you said you had questions?
Just regarding the tree clearing with regards to Indiana bats, is it acceptable just place restrictive notes on the plans?
Yes, but we will want to get some correspondence back from DEC, because you weren't just flagged for the Indiana bat, you were flagged for something I've never heard of before, called the pied billed greb, which is a threatened or endangered water fowl.
Right.
The Indiana bat we're very familiar with.
Yeah.
But we would love to get some correspondence from the DEC about this particular water fowl. I don't know what the mitigation, if there are...
I think that's related to the, to the river, but I'll see what I can get.
It may just be a letter that says, "Yeah, you're not going to affect..."
Right.
"...their habitat that's, you know, half a mile away, you're just in a bubble."
We do a lot of work in Beacon, and that comes up on a lot of our projects there, so I think it's just, but we'll clear that up and make sure everything's...
You'll also want to reach out to SHPO.
Yeah.
You're in the archaeological buffer, but you knew that already, you submitted the mappers. So, the correspondence between those two agencies, forward that to the town, and also reach out to Army Corps about the change in drainage to the wetland, and see if they have guidance on that. I mean, all of this will also be done through the secret review as well, so...
Okay, so the change in drainage is because we're moving it over?
I think it's the grading and also the swale that you're...
Right, but it's not in the wetland.
No, but it will change the drainage to the wetland, no?
Well, the drainage is already going there, it's just, it was going in in a very wide area, and now we're bringing it in through a swale in a controlled manner. I'll, I don't think I'm going to get any correspondence from them.
They're usually very brief.
Yeah.
But some correspondence from the Army Corps would just check that off.
Okay, I'll see what I can get.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, other than that, that's all the...
No, that's all I have, thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, we have an extension on the agenda tonight. It's for Kimmel subdivision. I don't know if we needed to be here for that, and I was just wondering if the board had any questions regarding that particular extension?
No, we kind of discussed it real quick earlier, so maybe just to...
We just have easement language to finalize, and then we can give everybody final copies for final review, and we'll be done.
Yeah, I think this is, anybody want to vote on this now?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, you didn't want to stay till the end of the meeting?
Not really. All right, have a good night.
All right, have a good night. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Sikh temple.
Good evening, Alfred Capelli, project architect for the Sikh temple, the new Sikh temple. Most of you are, are new here, so I'm going to do a quick overview of where we were and where we are right now. So, back in 2015, we submitted an application for a 20,000-square-foot Sikh facility. The Sikh community currently has a 6,500-square-foot facility on Ketchum Town Road, for those who don't know. They purchased this property back then to build, at that time, a 20,000-square-foot building. And what I've done for illustration purposes is, to your left, is what was approved back in 2018, and the reduced site plan, if you will, on the right side before you. So, due to things beyond everyone's control, whether it be the COVID epidemic, lack of attendance, increased construction costs, the Sikh Building Committee decided that perhaps 20,000 square feet was a little bit too, too large for them. So, they scrutinized all of their needs, and they felt that 13,500, where we are right now, is the comfortable level for them to, to utilize for their new building. Same components, there'll be a prayer hall, there'll be a dining hall, and then some additional offices, classrooms, and things of that nature. Their plan pretty much stayed the same, other than being reduced in size. We've illustrated a floor plan. For those who have not seen this before, this is a rendition of what was presented then, and for all intents and purposes, the length of the building is the same, so the rendition will, will hold true. This is what's being proposed at 13,500 square feet. So, just to discuss some of the items that were discussed at the, at the workshop, and just to clarify a few, few items, and randomly, if you will, if you beg my indulgence, I'll just hit on some of these things that were discussed earlier, lighting, communicative effects, no problem, we'll take care of whatever needs to be done there. The landscaping that was mentioned by Malcolm, I should emphasize that in addition to the, what you see, the little green dots, the landscaping, the pine trees, we are lining those two properties, the two corners of the property there, along the residential homes, there's a fence there as well. So, it's not only the, it's not only the, there's a six-foot-high fence that after exhaustive meetings that I had, coffee-clutching with the neighbors up there to try to satisfy their needs, their concerns, an open field that's been here forever, now is going to have an edifice that they were concerned about. So, we discussed the extensive landscaping and that six-foot-high stockade fence going the, the two sides along the residential property for their purposes. To touch upon the parking, the original concept, as you can see to your left there, believe it or not, had 148 spaces. We had a lot of overage there, a lot of overage for, as in many churches, Sundays don't get a lot of activity anymore, for whatever reason, but, but certainly on certain high holy days and for weddings and things of that nature, originally, the, the community had thought that they wanted to accommodate much more parking than perhaps they needed. And that comes on the heel of their, of their existing facility on Ketchum Town Road, which is, which is lacking tremendously in parking. This iteration of the reduced-size building has, as Malcolm had, had mentioned, we require 63 spaces only, we provided 72, which I didn't think was that great of a jump as far as giving a few more spaces, so to speak. But be that as may, we can, you know, we can discuss that. We can landbank it, we could do whatever. The electric charging stations, we're remiss, we talked about it, it never found its way onto the site plan, but it will in the next... We talked about it and never found its way onto the site plan, but it will in the next coming iteration. The circular drive there is a ceremonial, it's not so much for the driveway aspect of it. There's a flag in the center and again, there are activities that go on around the flag. So it's more ceremonial and I can speak to my client about maybe not having blacktop, maybe doing pavers, porous pavers, whatever the case might be, but we prefer not to get rid of that circular drive or that element where it's illustrated on our final site plan, but we can talk about that. The wetlands, now mind you, Malcolm's never been to the site, a lot of you guys haven't been to the site. So we're talking about, we're way uphill here. And believe it or not, this little dark green area is a wetlands. That wetlands historically was a, was like a little watering hole for the farmer years and years ago to, for his cattle, his cows to drink out of, believe it or not. How it got to be a wetlands is beyond me because it's on top of the hill. But be that as it may, it's a designated wetland. We addressed it back then. It's a local wetland. And the buffer notwithstanding, we'll have to talk about it because we really don't want to move the building. The parking, we can talk about. And we'll just leave it there for now. The SWIP, not a problem, whatever, you know, concerns or issues that John may have on the SWIP, that'll all get worked out. That's not a problem. The Duchess County Health Department, of course, they reviewed this however many years ago and they'll have the opportunity to re-review it again. And just to give a little further background, when we started this project, there was no central services here, no central water or sewer. We were designing well and septic for this. And the SEA community, you know, kept on talking to the town attorney, the town supervisor at the time, is there a way that we can annex ourselves? Because we were out of the district. And over time, the town agreed, the SEA community paid an influx of money to buy into the system and that's how we are currently in the water and the sewer district. So we're going to use that water for potable purposes, but also the building's going to be sprinkled. So, you know, that really is one of the things that drove trying to get at least the water The two driveways. It was, I don't know how that came to be, if it was the architect's design, that it was a good design practice on this corner property with the traffic being generated, that in fact, two driveways was the way to go to disperse traffic. There has been recent discussion with the SEA community to eliminate the All Angels Drive. We're having conversations with Mr. Prager, the local fire marshal here, and he's on the, he's a fireman up in New Hackensack. Part of the conversation was, hey Al, you know, we're going to be coming from New Hackensack and we're going to be shooting into that driveway on All Angels Hill Road where another fire company may come down Old Hope well to fight a fire or emergency vehicles and perhaps not having to go through the intersection. So as much as it's costing money for us to put that two driveways there, my opinion, it's good, it's good for safety and it's a good design practice, in my opinion. The traffic study that we submitted when we got our original approval reflects the two entrances. It did go through the Duchess County Department of Public Works. They conditionally approved it, didn't issue any permits because we didn't have a contract or a record, but that's already, I don't want to say signed, sealed, and delivered and you probably have that documentation in the file. Other than that, I think that's kind of where we are right now. And, you know, whatever we need to do to take care of, you know, the consultant's concerns with lighting and/or drainage or whatever we understand and, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel here. We're making it smaller, impact is smaller, but I understand that the review has to go through the process and we'll make, try to make everybody happy. Any questions?
I have a question. You pointed to the dark green area as the wetland. I was under the impression that the dotted line area, the top right of the building was the wetland, not the dark green.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, pond way up right in the back.
Back right-hand corner. This one ends in the other picture. You're absolutely right. That small dark depression I pointed to, my mistake, that's a little retention, detention, drainage pond that the engineer came up with, whatever he needed to do to disperse storm water. You're absolutely right, Malcolm. My apologies.
All right. Any board members have any questions regarding this? No? Okay. Do you have other questions regarding?
Yeah, I had a number of thoughts in response to what you had brought up. I think the first one would be the parking area. I mean, I understand wanting to keep the roundabout, particularly for ceremonial purposes. I think if we can redesign the parking area a little bit and draw it out so that it's less of a traffic circle for cars and more of sort of a, I mean, it can still be designed to take the load of a vehicle, but I would, I would mark it differently. I would have it, it would be a different color paver for pedestrians, right? And bring that out so that people are less likely to get drawn on to it. I would also, there's two, two-way entrances into the parking area and then one, one-way entrance into the parking area. I would get rid of the one-way and have the two-way entrances on either end and then you will have fewer cars entering or I guess fewer cars driving in front of the temple and also you eliminate the concern of people accidentally exiting that way. And I guess just in some way pulling that circle or visibly making that circle separate from the parking area. And I think that would do a lot for pedestrian and vehicle safety of the area. I mean, it's clear from the previous approvals, which I had not seen, it makes a lot more sense there, but now that we're moving towards this design, I think that there are changes to be made there.
You're not suggesting that we eliminate the driveway in front and incorporate that into the parking lot? We want to maintain that separate driveway that goes through, the spine of the driveway going through and then turn off into the driveway.
Yes. It's the one-way entrance into.
That's fine, that's fine. We'll look at that. That's, that's.
That is what I would look at.
That's perfectly agreeable.
And that way, the only, you know, then everything is sort of focused to the pedestrian connection from that circle to the entrance.
Sure.
And you have fewer cars moving through that area.
For that one-way, are you thinking pavers might work there as well?
It could. I would just get rid of it and create a pedestrian throughway connecting from the parking lot to.
And we may in fact do that, yes.
I think that that would make for a better design and a safer one. I know that the county brought up the two curb cuts, hearing the history about it. I defer to the board, knowing that there was a traffic study prepared based on two curb cuts.
Yeah, but how old is that? Traffic study?
That's a good question.
2015, 16, 17?
Yeah, that needs to be changed. Yeah, that needs to be.
Yes, and we can update that. I think that it would, you would just need to update it with current numbers because the number of congregants would be reduced significantly. So I think that taking that previous plan and updating it for secret purposes would be relatively simple.
That intersection there flows differently too now.
It does.
Because they added a couple lanes in there.
Okay.
That intersection.
Then we'll definitely need it to be updated. Okay. Yeah, what does the board think about the two curb cuts? Because that is a pretty big design feature. There are typical red flags associated with multiple curb cuts. I think that they're not so red in this particular instance, but we generally recommend fewer curb cuts. But I don't think that it is as big of an issue, given the geography of the site and how far away both of those are from the corner.
Yeah, very spread apart.
Yeah, I don't mind those curb cuts because I think it'll get people in and out quicker too because they're on separate roads like that.
And break up the traffic generation.
Yeah. It's going to limit the.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea for safety.
And I did discuss it with our, when the building committee suggested eliminating it, since we are smaller and the cost involved in that, and speaking with Phil Greeley, he was kind of, Al, I can do with the traffic study with the one entrance. He, off the top of his head, he felt he was on the threshold there of suggesting that, oh boy, I hope we don't need any turning lanes on the newly paved, not that it made any difference, on the Old Hope well road anyway. So at that point, I just says not, we'll wait to see when we come here. We decided we wanted to keep the two and with the fire, speaking to Howard, the two accessways, I think that's the way to go. And if I remember correctly, the All Angels entrance may be a limited access, so it may be right in, right out. It may not be a left-hand turn out on All Angels.
Yeah.
I don't remember, but I, I'd have to look that up. So on the Old Hope well is full movement, but.
The next point that I wanted to discuss with the board, there is proposed disturbance to the wetland buffer. It looks like the previously approved plans had considerably more disturbance in the wetland buffer and that that disturbance has been reduced. It also looks like there's landscaping through the wetland, but hearing the history of the wetland, it sounds like it is a very isolated and low-functioning, it's a wet spot in the field.
I'm not so sure and I should have probably went up there on a day like today. There may not even be any water in there.
Yeah.
Was there a wetland report prepared, the previous?
Yes, yes. You have that in the, in your documentation, yes.
So the applicant sounds fond of the location of the building. I think that with small revisions to that, one of the two smaller parking areas, you could also eliminate that disturbance to the wetland buffer, but it's also a very minor disturbance to the wetland buffer and I would defer to the board on that because there's a lot of other disturbances to that particular wetland buffer, so.
Yeah.
If I can throw another monkey wrench in, that further complicates things, which doesn't reflect on this particular plan. Again, speaking, we got a memo from the fire department, they wanted to shift around a couple of fire hydrants, add a couple of additional fire hydrants. They wanted access around the building. So I kind of agreed upon putting at least a gravel or maybe some sort of pavers to take a fire apparatus around the building. If you can connect it, Al, okay, but at least give us something to the back of the building, which is already in the works and I already agreed to it. So that's, may or may not complicate that wetlands encroachment even more.
Go up through the loading zone?
I guess we could and Troy is looking, actually, I would like to circumnavigate the whole building, to be honest with you. I'd like to have that temporary, whatever we do, loop all the way around. At least that was my dumb architect's intent, is to just loop all the way around, connect the loading area, so to speak, which that's outside the kitchen and the other. So that's what I would, so you'll see that next time, but I don't want to shock anybody with what's that new thing.
We'll have a conversation about wetland disturbance when you revise the parking.
Exactly.
The site circulation.
Exactly.
Another comment that was brought up, I mean, it sounds like you had lengthy discussion as to landscaping and screening on the back of the property. The county brought up the, in their comment memo, the species that were being proposed and also suggested, I guess, diversifying the hedge in the back and incorporating particularly lower things, but there's also going to be a fence there. Right, you said that the fence is proposed, it's not existing?
Well, it's not existing, no, that's proposed. And on the detailed sheets, it's.
It's like a six-foot white vinyl fence?
It's on there, six-foot white vinyl fence, that's correct. Bing, 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 bing. I thought we had selected actually the type of trees that, again, not the same type of trees. I thought there were three or four different species there, you know, not, you know, deer-resistant, et cetera, et cetera. We'll take another look at it.
Yeah, the county.
By all means.
Comment letter is pretty specific.
Sure.
When they talk about landscaping, take a look at that, see if it changes what the species that you would propose are.
Not a problem.
If there's going to be a six-foot vinyl fence enhancements to that landscaping would just be for the applicants.
Sure.
The neighbors aren't going to see it. So I think that that's a relatively moot point. Let me just make sure I'm not missing anything. John, do you have anything?
No, I believe they mentioned the main concerns that we had. Including the revisions to the SWIP that was approved previously, so everything else is just standard housekeeping items, getting your outside regulatory approvals. And it sounds like you've had some good discussions with the fire department.
We talked briefly about lighting. It sounds like you're going to revise the site layout to a certain extent, which will probably change the lighting plan.
Sure.
In that conversation, I just wanted to mention, include the proposed pole height.
That's, I took a note of that. Yeah, I didn't know.
The specs of the lights appear good otherwise, just verify, 15 feet is usually the max that we work with. And if we can get a detailed, like a foot handle photometric plan.
Not a problem.
But obviously, you know, wait until you, you may want to wait to do that until you have a site layout that you.
Sure.
Are happy moving forward with, because there are a couple of different considerations that would change how you want to lay out the site.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
No, he was just looking at, that building is actually hitting the buffer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
No, I get it.
I get it, yeah. It's a matter of reviewing up that report too, because that report was.
Old.
Well, not that it's old, it's going to be the same and it's going to be less of an impact today. I mean, I know, I remember that being a long discussion. I believe that was, I believe David Stolman was here then when we were dealing with that. Because I remember that pond because again, it's, you know, Al said it was a, basically used for, you know, the farm at the time.
Yeah.
It was just something that was kind of left behind. Because basically the building's in the same position it was back then, so we approved it based upon the information that was given to us at the time.
Yeah, there was more of it in the buffer at the time. I mean, it was a big building.
Right, there's more, right. There're less than any amount of buffer today, so I mean.
Did you guys ever go out and look at it?
Yeah, well, actually, I don't think anybody went as a group. I know I went up there because I went up there, walked the property. I mean, there really wasn't a lot of, there wasn't really anything there. Again, like I said, this was basically, for a period of time, they were farming, you know, they were farming this, they were, you know, growing corn on the property. I think I went up there, I do, everything was, you know, it was just basically, everything was cut down at that point in the fall.
Hey, that was Nick Cole, Bud Cole, I don't know if you guys are.
Yeah, the side road too.
Bud Cole, old timer, passed away. His grandson is the one that contracted with the, with the property owners to farm it. I don't know how that came to be, but he farmed it for a couple of years and I believe he got ill or he went elsewhere or whatever the case might be. That's why it's laying fallow right now. But it is, there is no trees on the, on the site. I don't know, there may have been a couple, you know, on the north side there at one time, but.
Yeah.
Empty lot, totally empty. 16.5 acres, if I didn't say that before.
Okay. So I mean, the big, the big key to this, I guess, Malcolm, is you want to see that, you want to review that wetland report, I guess, again?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I know we probably. Yeah, so I mean, I know we probably had it somewhere, I guess, but you could find it, and I guess circulate it to everybody, yeah.
Yeah, and you, okay, if you don't have it, I think you have it, but whatever you need, if it has to be amended, not a problem, we'll work on that modification to the parking. If we can, maybe directly with Malcolm, our engineer, work something out so the next time we came, we, and we're not going back and forth on the same issue again, and then we can tighten everything up.
I mean, yeah, at the same time, I guess you need to have, I mean, everybody's okay, I mean, the board, out of the board members, everybody's okay with two entrances, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so just leave it as such. Yeah, leave it up to the congregation, if they want to get rid of it for some reason, one of those, it's their choice, but, and then the parking, I guess, is, you know, working that out. You think that the number 73, they'll be, they'll be comfortable with that number?
Right now, 72.
They're 72, sorry.
72, and then actually, there were discussions that, hey, you know, if you are providing that driveway behind the building, maybe we can not take the whole area, the whole gravel driveway, park on the side, or something like that for overflow. But right now, they're comfortable with 72, so.
Okay, I mean, it's up to, as long as they feel they're comfortable, it seems you're above the minimum requirement, so.
And we can, we can suggest an area for future parking, which I think we did originally, which we didn't do in this iteration, but originally, we had some future parking, which, which again, allows us the possibility that, you know, maybe we can do something there.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, so that goes back with the land banking, so if, let's say they did land bank parking, the analysis for the stormwater is going to be including that, that as well for land banking? Just to make it, John, it's as simple, just as, if they were to land bank parking, let's say for future, in case they, you know, they end up with a lot of overflow, you know, they end up, you know, doing well on a lot of members, you know, they get a lot more members, and they need that additional parking, and they decide to put it on the plan as a land bank parking, would they need to put that on to show that as part of the SWIP as well?
Yeah.
For the stormwater, because for future?
Yeah.
That way, they wouldn't have to make a trip back again for something.
Right.
Could they just bank what's on the original plan?
Yeah, we would do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, because I'm just saying, if you're going to go through all this right now, you might as well do that.
Absolutely.
That way, it just, it simplifies things for the future.
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue for them, because of the decrease in purview overall, so to include that now would make sense.
Okay, yeah. All right. Okay, anybody else is good with this?
I'm good.
All right, and it's just...
We'll tidy things up, we'll submit it whenever we get to that point, and then we'll, we'll see, you know, and then we'll move from there.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's one of those things too, where we, I guess it's amended site plans, I don't know, I don't know, do we have to have a public hearing for this one?
We should, yeah.
With an amendment, yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure. But so, at that point, get everything together, and then I guess we'll have to...
Do another dog and party show.
I'm hoping it's nowhere near what it was the last time.
That's, that's fine, we'll...
Yeah.
We'll do whatever we need to do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, have a good evening.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect that I'm recused on the next item that's coming up.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have is a site plan and special use permit for Heinemann's Caretaker Cottage.
Hi, good evening, board. Excuse me. Sarah Ryan, Van de Water, Van de Water. On behalf of the applicant, Michelle Marie Heinemann.
Okay.
So this is the legalization of an existing structure on the site to become a code-compliant caretaker's cottage. The structure itself has been there since the early 2000s. Ms. Heinemann purchased the property in 1998, and it was built without permits. It is, right now, constructed as three tiny homes pushed together. The plan is to remove all the internal division to create one caretaker's cottage. It is also currently undersized, there is going to be a slight expansion to make it comply with the minimum square footage required by the code.
Okay, so they will be, so they will be adding to this, then?
Very slightly, yes.
Slightly, okay.
Yes, it will not increase the footprint much. I believe that there's an existing deck that's going to be expanded upon.
Okay. All right. Let's open it for any questions from the board first. Anybody have any comments before we turn it over to the staff? No? Okay. All right, so I'll start out with the, with the planner, if you want to go, can I go through the couple of comments you had?
So the simplest is a correction to the application form. The zoning district should be listed as R80. And then, looks like a type 2 action for our review, so that would conclude seeker. And then the only thing left would be the special permit condition, section 24061C. Each structure shall be placed in a manner that will allow a future subdivision based upon compliance with the current zoning regulations. It looks like everything is in place to do that, we would just need to modify it to show hypothetical subdivisions.
Set X, things like that, okay.
And that would be, I guess, in addition to the bulk table, right? And show like a hypothetical lot with its setback requirements, and a hypothetical bulk table for that lot.
All right, there was an undocumented septic on the site, it was there when the client purchased the property. Amy, if you'd like to speak to that, we have had some discussion with the health department.
I think the septic actually entered a failure state, and there has been soil testing and a new design done that's been submitted, or is in the mail to be submitted to the health department now. It was witnessed by Dan Keeler, the soil testing. So it will have its own septic that's up to current standards.
Okay. The, okay, so the health department eventually weigh in on the approval for that?
Correct, they've been involved in...
Okay.
Is that shown on the current plan?
It's not.
Okay.
It is close to the house where the existing cesspool was. I actually don't know where they're proposing it, but it is going to be within the same general location.
Okay, so that and the additions that were discussed, just make sure that they're clearly pointed out on the plan, and if there's any grading necessary or there was any trouble, please add that to the plan as well.
Okay.
And Judith, I know we discussed the second curb cut, the driveway coming in on Dogwood Hill Road. I did look at the county historical GIS, that curb cut had been existing since 1980, so well before the client purchased the property. The code changed for residential properties in 2020, so respectfully submit that it's grandfathered in.
It would also serve to be the driveway of the caretaker's cottage in the event of a subdivision.
In the event of what?
In the event of a subdivision, it would serve as a driveway for, you know, the caretaker's cottage.
Right, so that would be, so that would be the access to that one parcel, as opposed to the 376 entrance being to the main house?
Yeah.
Okay.
That driveway is not currently recognized by 911, despite it being on there since 1980.
Yeah, if it's one parcel, it gets one driveway, right?
Correct.
Well, there is a main driveway on 376 as well.
Yeah, but with the second one, it'd either be subdivided or get rid of one, right?
Right, there's no current plan to subdivide at this time, so the whole property would still be on the 376 address.
But the property, but both, both structures have 911 address numbers?
No, not currently. It would be a secondary structure to the primary structure.
Right, be accessory, yeah, accessory to, but being that it is a dwelling, I guess it's going to need a separate 911 address.
I would have to look into that, I can't speak to that this time.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah, I mean, probably at some point, prior to getting a CO, it's definitely going to need that.
I mean, if accessory apartments also need separate 911 addresses, that...
Right, right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so...
So this would be a caretaker's cottage, not an accessory apartment?
Correct.
Because it's, right now, an accessory apartment has to be attached to the main.
Correct.
So this would be something totally different?
Yes.
And right now, this address is hyphenated, it's known as 1109-111, so we need to clarify that as to how that would be identified.
Okay, okay. I believe it's always been known as that, that's how the county recognizes it as well on their property search.
It is an illegal structure, so I'm not sure how they will, but it has to be into the 376 address at this time. I don't think we should consider it after, as a Dogwood Hill.
Yeah, they just, yeah, it sounds like...
Yeah, we're not proposing changing.
Right, they're not changing anything, but it's, at least as long as the county knows that it's a, you know, it's a separate, it's a, technically, it's a separate dwelling, you know, if somebody else is living there and they pick up the phone, you know, and they have an emergency, you want to be able to go to the, you know, to the right one, you don't want to go knocking on the door to the, you know, to the big house, and there's nobody there, and, you know, the emergency's actually in the, you know, in the caretaker's cottage, so.
Understood.
Yeah. So, it's not just, I mean, just follow, I mean, just get a follow-up with the county, they could probably clarify that with you.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's see, so I guess moving forward, I guess, really at this point, as we were discussing earlier, I guess this is going to need a, I guess it's going to need to have a public hearing regarding, regarding what's being proposed. So at this point, I'm going to say, I don't know, we're probably looking at, April 1st would be ideal, but, all right, we have plenty, we have, there's really nothing on B for the, for the April 1st meeting at this point.
Would we have to get that driveway thing figured out first, or?
Well, I mean, the other driveway, I mean, basically comes into the, to the highway superintendent's purview. Right?
The curb condition?
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing, is there, Judith, is there anything in the zoning that says they can't have that second driveway?
Yes, a residential area can only have one curb cut.
Yeah, only get one.
It's been there since before that was adopted as...
That code was enacted in 2020, so.
Okay.
It's a pre-existing, Malcolm.
Right, but it's pre-existing from back whenever...
From like 1920, yeah.
Right.
From long, long before Wup and Trez, is that a code? Yeah.
There was a trailer on there originally, so I'm not sure how that, I could look into the records to see how that came into play. So that trailer was removed, but I don't, you know, remember that it had, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's, yeah, I mean, it's not like a traffic impact issue. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like...
It connects to the end of the calls, I guess.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, is everybody's okay with it?
Yeah.
So I mean, if they, if the highway superintendent's fine with it, I guess, at this point? All right, is it, or does it need to be, I mean, would it need to be blocked off?
While keeping with the code, as we're calling it out, we are making people remove when there's more than one curb cut. This is a little bit different, so...
Right, that it's being pre-existing.
Additionally, Ms. Heinemann did obtain variances for fencing that's going to circumnavigate the property, and, as well as for a gate on that back entrance.
She already has a variance for it?
Yes, we obtained them last year.
Okay. All right, if nobody has, if none of the board members have an issue with it? Yeah, all right. Everybody's okay with it? To leave it there would be, I mean, again, it's been there for many years, so, yes, if we could just leave it, but I guess at the point of the hypothetical subdivision, would we want that to be the primary access to one lot, and then the other one be the primary access to the other lot?
Would make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the easiest course, it's a hypothetical subdivision, so we don't really need to have...
Right, so if, so if...
We don't need to have a driveway on the plans necessarily, we just need to show that that structure would comply with the setback requirements. If at the time of a future subdivision, they wanted to grade down and connect to the same road as the primary entrance, they could do that too, and at that time, we'd probably have to get rid of it.
But I guess it kind of, yeah, but I guess you do it that way, it kind of justifies having it out at that cul-de-sac at that point.
I mean, it's, it's up to you how you want to draw out that particular subdivision. I think there's a lot of ways to make it work, but it already has a hypothetical driveway, so.
Now, that piece would, that would have to sit on its own five-acre lot, then, right?
No, I believe the...
R80s.
No, 80s, so 80,000 square feet.
It's a little under two acres.
Yeah, 80? Yeah, so it's less than two acres, just under two acres of property, for each lot in that zone.
I believe it's 1.87.
I thought 80 was five acres. Yeah, looks like the, huh?
I thought R80 was five acres.
No, I think that's 3A or 5A.
Yeah, yeah, R80's...
R80's 80,000 square feet.
Yeah, okay. All right, so if that's not...
Should have been divided.
Huh? All right, so if that's not an issue, I guess we can move, go back to the question regarding the public hearing. So do we want to set this public hearing for April 1st?
What else, there's not a lot on the agenda then, right?
Yeah, there's two things on there for the first. Yep, yeah, okay. So now would be, yeah, so if we were...
Yeah, because we probably won't get a lot.
April 1st is good, okay. I entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 1st for this project.
So move.
I'll second. Okay, motion's been accepted, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda this evening is Joey Estates.
Hi, Amy Bomardieri from Panstecosa for Joey Estates. The engineering letter that I received was from the previous submission.
Yeah.
So the planner's letter, I can go through that. Everything seemed pretty self-explanatory, except for, it is 77 proposed single-family units. There's three parcels, that, two wetland parcels, that'll be in a conservation easement, and then one proposed water treatment parcel.
Okay.
There's a comment about the canopy, the bridge over the wetland and blocking sunlight. The natural canopy of the trees probably blocks more sunlight than the bridge would. We could put a reticuline grate in, we could do all kinds of things, plus it would clear out additional, the span would be clearer than it is now. So I don't see how that would cause disturbance.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest problem is, is just the fact of the bridge itself. Everybody's kind of been talking about this from, you know, the previous meetings, I mean, you know, again, I get this is just a, you know, it's supposed to be just a concept, but, you know, it's supposed to be a realistic concept. You know, the property, you know, if this was a viable piece of property to subdivide into a lot of lots, it would have been done years ago. But, you know, I mean, it's, the property does have a lot of faults, you know, it does have, you know, steep slopes, it does have, you know, some wetlands, you know, and things like that, so I mean, realistically, you know, even... So I mean, realistically, you know, even to build, you know, all 77 lots as a conventional subdivision, you know, you have to agree that it would be extremely expensive to build this.
It would be.
Just to get, just for site work itself, you know, not including the bridge. So, I mean, you know, but we're not, we're not looking at that as a whole. I think it's just everybody's kind of, their concern is, you know, that the, you know, they discussed, we discussed the bridge, you know, the, the town wouldn't accept a bridge at the end of the day. If we were actually doing a, an actual subdivision, they're just not going to accept it due to the cost of maintenance and everything else that's involved with it, you know, just to, you know, access 10 lots. It's just, it's a burden on the, you know, on the roadway budget, you know, going forward. You know, when that needs to be maintained, when it needs to be replaced, it's just.
Sure.
A lot of, it's a, it's a big piece of infrastructure.
However, it's just a concept.
I understand.
And that section of the code doesn't require that the town accept the road, or the section of the code doesn't stipulate any of that. So the bridge being there, we don't want to build the bridge. We want to do more of a layout like the lower part, where the impact is much less.
Yeah, but, you know, and now at this point, because you're kind of, you know, kind of alluding to the fact that it is a, you know, that there is a lot of infrastructure that's got to go into this.
There is, and we don't, we don't, we would prefer to keep the cost of the homes lower and not put any of this infrastructure in from here over, and keep it a small footprint that would be less environmentally impactful. But the section of the code doesn't dictate that it be affordable or it be accepted by the town as ownership of the, the road. So saying that the bridge would be too expensive to build, probably you're right.
Right, yeah, but again, that, this, it equates out to 10 more lots that probably wouldn't have, you know, that probably would never be there if this was a conceptual, you know, plan, or not a, I'm sorry, not a conceptual plan, but a, you know, an actual plan. You know, if there's an actual plan to be built out, you know, those 10 lots, you know, wouldn't even be brought to the table because of the cost.
So again, we're only asking for a lot count to go to the town board with to rep.
Right.
So through the planning process, the normal subdivision process, lots may fall out no matter what.
Correct, they would.
So whatever number we go to the town board with, we can't exceed that, but chances of us getting there may be low.
All right. Let some of the other guys speak on regard to this. I mean, what is everybody else's feeling with this?
Can I, can I just finish through the letter? One more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a comment about the EAF being updated. I made a submission in January, and then I added a supplemental submission. The January submission did include updates to the EAF. The February supplemental submission just added a connection to Smithtown Road. So that wouldn't have changed anything on the EAF. So the EAF that you have is most up to date.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, but I was looking at conceptual or not, it's just gotta be a feasible lot count.
Right, it's gotta be realistic.
Yeah. Really, you gotta net out those 11 lots that are on the bridge side. Anything else that would be a wetland now, right? And now, what is it, like 66, right?
Yeah, if those weren't there, that makes it a 66 lot subdivision at that point. Anybody on the other side here?
Explain, the bridge is not there, why? They just put a road to it, or they can't?
No, there'd be no access to that.
Right, because it's a.
It's locked in by wetlands. Yeah. So the only way to get through a wetland is to go over.
Yeah.
But then the town would have to take control of that bridge afterward. It means we'd have to.
She points out the town does not have to accept the road.
Yeah, I mean, they could keep it in a homeowners association.
Not accepting it. Right, that, that's true, that's true, too, yeah.
The town board does not have to accept dedication of the road.
Correct.
It'd be a private road.
Yeah. Yeah? Anybody, anybody else have anything?
Well, I, I mean, I still believe that the construction of the bridge would require a wetland permit. A town wetland disturbance permit to construct the bridge.
Because of the sunlight?
Yes, I mean, for many reasons, but the simplest, I mean, okay.
The sunlight is, it's a stretch.
If you built a dome over the entirety of that wetland, and none of the foundations of that dome touched the wetland, would you be disturbing the wetland?
No. If you don't disturb the better of the banks, you don't disturb the wetland.
I think in the town wetland code, you would be.
All right, the sunlight is, that's a little bit of a stretch. I mean, the canopy over the wetland right now is probably blocking out 90% of the sunlight.
As opposed to the 100%, that would be blocked out by the road?
It's gonna be a reticuline bridge. It's gonna be graded.
Natural occurrences are a little different than a man-made object.
Yeah, but so the argument, the sunlight argument is a stretch, come on.
The bridge is a stretch, and I think that you would need a wetland permit to construct it. That's, that's my opinion.
No, 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 I mean, obviously, that's gotta be, yeah, I mean, that would have to be if you're disturbing, you know, or, you know, at least the wetland, the disturbance permit in the buffer. You're gonna have to have it at least that, I don't know what the distance is actually, the width of the wetland itself, but to go through it, you need the permit anyway.
Well, what she's representing is that if she constructs the foundations for the bridge outside of the wetland buffer and spans it, like, drop the bridge in place, that they would not be disturbing the wetland in any way. And it's possible that the Army Corps or the DUC, that that might be true there, but I don't think that that would be true under the town wetland code.
Yeah.
I think that that enterprise, the construction of that bridge, as I've described, or as you've described, would constitute a disturbance to the wetland and require a wetland disturbance permit.
And, I mean, really, you're supposed to, when you're doing a lot count or something like that, you're supposed to net out the steep slopes and, steep slopes and everything.
They are netted out. It is. We could mathematically, I think we could get 123 lots with everything netted out. So the 77 that we're proposing is taking a lot into consideration. And the steep slope disturbance potentially would be 10 acre, nine and a half acres in this scenario.
I'm good with the 66, netting out the bridge.
Can you show me?
Yeah, I agree.
Show me where the bridge is on your map.
It's right here.
And which of the lots that wouldn't?
These. So these, everything going along that road.
Does that road come out somewhere? Or that's also a cul-de-sac?
What was that?
That's a cul-de-sac?
Here.
To, to your left there?
Yep. But then, so this connects now to Smithtown, and these two lots get access off of Cedar Hill directly.
But would that cul-de-sac is?
No other way to access that.
Yeah, we're actually supposed to be discouraging the cul-de-sac thing now anyway and having everything connected in projects like this.
You do have frontage down on Cedar Hill through those 11 lots. Is that a possibility when you looked at Smithtown?
Through here?
Yeah.
There's not much. I don't have.
Don't have.
I don't think I have a wide enough road. I mean, maybe a shared driveway, but.
But not.
So maybe two more lots, two or three more lots, coming in off of here and avoiding.
And that's the, you'd come down off a mountain. That would be the other concern, is that any grading would have to stay on the property.
Right.
Get a road through there.
I think a road would be a stretch. A shared driveway is a possibility, but I don't think there's enough frontage there. And there is, there's a small wet spot. I don't know. I mean, it's so small, and we're not going anywhere near it, so I didn't have anybody flag it or look at it, but.
But that would be an issue, yeah.
So.
Put a road through there, or a driveway through there.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's the question. We're looking for a lot count that depending on the approval of the bridge would be 77 or 66. Residential lots.
Correct. But again, so the layout down there, those are two-story buildings with 77 total units, two-bedroom units, townhouses or condos.
Right.
So that's the actual footprint we'd like to build. You know, we don't want to do all of this disturbance.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. That's.
I'm just.
That makes that, yeah. And again, I get, you know, the, you know, the clustering makes sense, you know, for other reasons.
Right.
You know, it's just a matter of, you know, just what is, what's, what's the actual reasonable number, I think is what the board, you know, has had, you know, discussion on.
Those are, you said six units in each?
That's 2020, 22 buildings, so it would be, it's three and four units, three or four units in each, so.
So some would be second floor only? Would they be up and down?
There are two-story buildings. That also helps cut down on the, the footprint of the development. So if they're townhouses, you know, there could be three two-story units. I mean, the configuration of it.
Well, I thought the letter said five or six units in each building.
It, it may have. It can't exceed six in a building, so whatever.
Yeah.
So what are you showing down there?
So what I'm showing down there is, there's a 22 building, so if you had three and four in each, then it would equate to 77.
So is it gonna be more like?
Garage?
No, not in, well, no, this is just a conceptual layout, so.
Because it does look a little crowded.
Well, if it's two, if it's a two-story building and you have four units in each, you have two up and two down, it's a condo, no garage.
But you don't show any parking down there?
I do. There's a bunch of parking there. There's parking, so you have a main road coming in between the two rows, and then you have like a drive aisle, two parking spaces behind it, and then there's on-road parking along the road coming in. You want me to bring it over there?
No, we're a little ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
And it's, and the bottom, just so everybody can keep in mind, the bottom is not within our purview until the town board, right, until the town board gives, you know, gives them the okay that they can move forward with that type of a plan. So right now, it's a matter of us coming up with the actual number. So, you know, whether or not the number was 77, or 66, or whatever the case may be, that they, we, they could take that number to the town board and then go through the process with them, whether or not they would allow some type of, you know, clustered, cluster-type development like that in the area.
So going back to the bridge, all those other roads, I presume, would be public on, it's offered for public dedication?
Well, in, they don't have to be, so in, under the.
Well, what's your proposal?
My proposal is to eliminate this development entirely and build something like that.
If, if you had to build that, what would, what would your proposal be?
I mean, it would be.
That's what we're talking about.
It would, it would be beneficial to us to have the town take it over. We'd build it to the town specs, and then the town would.
The indication is the town might not take over the bridge, so that, that section would be a private road.
But when you're looking at, right, in that scenario, sure.
So we would also eliminate from the lot count, too, in that?
Well, it'd make, make it more difficult to build on those lots.
They proposed that as a private, private road, and the town didn't take it over. The town, there's no say in that, or, then it falls back to, as, you know, as Malcolm said, it's dependent upon a, it's dependent upon an application for the wetland disturbance.
Correct.
You know, or the temporary wetland disturbance to build the bridge.
But then again, going back to the section of the code, at no point does it read that the town needs to commit to ownership of the road for the conceptual plan to develop the lot count.
So what's everybody, all right. I mean, we're really, we're really, you get two different numbers here. It's, I mean, that's what it's coming, with all the discussion we've had.
I support 66.
I'm at 66.
I'm not. I support it over the bridge, or the implications that come down the line with the, with it being a private road, and, and it's just, for me, I think 66 is the right number to go with.
I'd agree. I'm also at 66, because I think it's gotta, to get the lot count, it's gotta be somewhat feasible. That's not even feasible.
66. Okay. Robert?
I'll go with the floor.
I think that we're, I think that's what the number that we're looking at is 66.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, so with the conception of this. So at this point, I'll just formalize this in a, in a vote. So with this, the, we'll have to authorize the secretary to direct a letter to the, I guess, to the applicant and the, and the town board, that we've done the review for the subdivision, and we feel that 66 lots is, is a number that, you know, fits for what's being proposed.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion's a, it's, may I make a second?
Secretary.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for working with us on this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help.
Take care.
You, too.
Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda is site plan and special use permit for Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have me tonight instead of Mr. Lynch. He'll be thankful.
Should we tell him? So I guess at this point, it looks like, it's like we're back to, we're back to the table again with this.
Well, the DEIS was submitted back in September, right? At the request of them.
Yeah, there was a lot of, there was things going on outside of this room that I think that, that stalled things, and it wasn't on our part. I, listen, I, I don't have the person that was, you know, that was dealing with that here tonight. So, you know, we were, this is what, this is where it went, so.
That's fine.
We understand, we, we've gone and we've gotten to this point, and we know now this is back.
Yes.
You know, that it's back in front of us again. You know, when we got the word after the last meeting, you know, we had discussed, you know, the decisions that were made, you know, outside of here in executive session with council. The planner was authorized to, you know, to make sure that he went back to this, you know, and did the review for completeness, and that document was produced.
Yes, and there's no blame to be placed anywhere, we understand. So here we are tonight, the DEIS was found to be incomplete. So, you know, I, I don't want to say I think we all agree to that, and it's gonna be revised and updated and resubmitted. If that's the, you know, that's the flavor of the board here to, to move this thing forward.
As mentioned in my letter, the stormwater management section and the traffic section are still under review, but I wanted to get something to your team as quickly as possible regarding the sections that were under my purpose.
That's fine, not a problem. And again, I mean, no disrespect against Malcolm here. Again, a lot of this went through before Malcolm, a lot of the review process for the site plan approval, and likewise, from our team as well. You know, we have information that perhaps didn't find its way into the DEIS, which we'll sit down with, with the people who are putting that together, and hopefully, you'll come up with a comprehensive DEIS that'll be acceptable and, you know, move, which, however you want to move it, you know? So, does anybody have any questions? It's unfortunate I don't have any material here. At some point, Ty, we have so many newbies here, nobody even knows. Half the board, and some people over here may not even know what this is all about, except that, that's old Downey, you know? But that's unfair.
Yeah, I mean, to bring everybody up to speed, to be honest, is almost like having a, a separate meeting. It might be just for that in itself.
Well, we don't mind. If you want to have a separate meeting, we can explain where we are and where we're going and where we've been.
Yeah.
And then people can make their own decisions.
And that might be some, we might have to, we might have to do that. Might have to just have a workshop-type session with everybody involved and, you know, put it all out on the table here, so that this, there's, well, there's three of the four here tonight, but there's four new members.
Sure.
You know, they're probably, you know, probably need to hear everything, and then at the same time, you know, bring them up to speed, and then it's, you guys are working on the DEIS, and maybe, maybe we can do that.
I'll be glad to come and do whatever we need to do.
All right.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect that I received correspondence today dated March 4, 2024, from Mr. Lynch, the attorney for the applicant. He asked that that item be placed into the record. I'd, I would recommend that the board accept that into the record.
Okay. All right, we should do that as a form of motion.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion, okay. As long as it's put into the minutes, we're covered.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So with that, and I don't know if anybody, anybody's looked at this, but does anybody have any particular questions right now regarding this? I don't know if anybody's.
We don't have, the members don't have any papers.
You don't have any plans?
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, so with that, we'll have to work on getting them, getting them information.
Again, had to be willing to formally, informally, however you wanted to do it, just to take them through the process where we were and where we are today. And you obviously correct me if I go astray, but just to, you know, educate everybody.
I think at this point, I mean, I think everybody probably, probably needs, well, I don't know, Ferber, you guys don't need this, you got all the plans, right?
Oh, yeah.
Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so if you were, would you be able to provide us four sets of the, you know, the past proposal?
Sure.
Or the most recent proposal that was made?
Sure, so again, to clarify and not let this thing go on forever, you have a complete set of plans for the almost-approved above-ground tanks. You do not have a complete set, I don't believe. You only have a site plan reflecting the buried tanks. So, and we can get you all of that information 100%.
Okay, yeah.
And whatever other documentation, yeah.
And again, I know there's a lot more to this because it's, you know, it's not just the site plan.
Sure.
As much as there's other things that I think that we're going to have to, that we might have to provide for them, is this is all tied into a local law, which, you know, affects, you know, I think, two zoning districts, not just this one, but I believe it's also the airport industrial district as well. So, yeah, so that, that.
That was your call, the airport district, that wasn't our call, so.
It wasn't my call, it wasn't my call either.
Not you, but I'm just saying, it was the town's call.
That was another entity.
Yes.
Yes, other than this board.
Could have been simplified.
But, but I think it just helps that the newer members can read the documentation that was provided to us by the town board, because again, this is, this is all contingent upon a, the passing of a local law at the town board level. Okay, so that's just something you got to keep in mind. So it's not like, I know that, you know, previously there was mention that this has already been approved, it's already filed in Albany, and, you know, it's not half the story. But there's still the process in going through this with the, you know, the environmental review and providing an EIS at the end of the day that needs to be done prior to the town board taking action on this local law. So we're moving in that direction, and that's where we go. We'll get everybody up to speed and we'll reach out to you, you know, in the future if we decide to do that, have a workshop meeting.
Sure, I'll leave that up to you. Meanwhile, we'll work on the DEIS and resubmit that. Hopefully, we're closer to that point, but I welcome to, again, meet with whoever to bring everybody up to snuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Eric.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. So with that, we go on to our conceptual reviews, which we have one tonight. We have a conceptual review for North Chelsea LLC Ground Mounted Community Solar Farm.
Hi, everybody. My name's Andrew Gordon, I'm with Carson Power, representing the North Chelsea Solar Farm. I do not have a board, but I have a few extra printouts if anybody needs one. I think we did send some in ahead of the meeting.
Sure, I think, you guys have?
Oh, wait, no, I have it. Come on.
Okay.
This is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
There's a bigger one. I can pass out if you.
This one you're talking about.
That's it. So if anybody wants a larger printout, if he's around, not.
Everybody's got it.
So this is a 5-megawatt AC fixed-tilt ground-mounted community solar project. The proposed parcel is a 30 Duck Pond Road, which is off of Stony Kill Road. It's a pretty interesting location for this project. There's actually an adjacent existing community solar farm, I believe it's Route 9D Solar, which is owned and operated by Nexamp. Nexamp is actually a partner of Carson Powers and a development partner. So we have an agreement with Nexamp where we would actually be able to access this parcel through the existing access road, existing through the Route 9D project, which you can see in the top-left corner of the concept map. The point of interconnection for the facility would be adjacent to where the existing project air connects as well, which is a 34.5 KV line that runs kind of northeast, southwest through that transmission corridor right there. So it's a good parcel for this, there'd be zero-view shed access, a lot of the existing infrastructure, really good grid infrastructure for where this is located. Site is, is a little bit undulated, but not too bad, all constructable for fixed-tilt solar. We make sure to include an ALTA with full topography, with our full application submission, so that could be reviewed. The biggest challenge with this site is there are wetlands in this area, which explains kind of the funny shape of the existing solar project in the northwest that's operated by Nexamp, and then also kind of the funny shape that's proposed for our project. So the proposal we have here does include some paneling within the wetland buffer area, and where you see the, where it says point of interconnection, you can see where the new access road would connect from the existing access road to the new project. There is a very small, I think it's actually considered a stream that we would have to cross that would be constructed with a relatively small culvert. So that would be the only direct impact to wetland, and then we would be looking for a wetland disturbance permit to include some paneling in the buffer area as well, which is necessary here due to the somewhat odd shape of the high and dry spots. The last interesting bit on the wetlands, we have completed a full delineation, so that'll be available with our full submission. The DEC did go out and conclude a site walk, they are not taking jurisdiction of the large wetland bodies on site, so they'll be Army Corps jurisdictional, which is a bit more workable for us, and happy to answer any and all questions on the concept plan.
There looks like there's quite a bit of floodplain on the property that would conflict with, I guess, some of your structure, road and solar panel. How do you think that that would fare with, I mean, it's not a house, so that's good, but has that been factored into your plans?
Yeah, so floodplain's okay for us, it's constructable and financeable. We need to make sure that our inverter pads are out of the floodplain or elevated to a point above the 100-year watermark. That's our design consideration, but the panels are elevated on a steel pile, and it's okay to be on a floodplain, that's insurable and financeable. But we would be, I think we are going to need to discuss floodplain permit from the town of Lockwood here. That's something else I'd appreciate some feedback on. I think it is a, that might be issued by the zoning administrator, or is that something that comes directly from the planning board as well? Building Department? Okay.
And what's, I guess, estimated or maybe calculated acreage of tree clearing?
So the entire property is, is covered in trees today.
Do you know what the state of them, I guess, like the approximate age or maturity of that forest is?
No, I do not, I think we could provide a rough gauge of that. I believe the landowner might have done some selective clearing recently, but I'm not 100% sure. That's something we can definitely include in our, in our application materials. I think this is about 26 acres of panel area or within the fence, so there would be about 26 acres of tree clearing.
Okay.
So they're looking at clearing 26 acres?
Oh, wait, Matt. 26 acres of panel and you're going to clear more than that?
A little bit more, probably.
Yeah, that's right, it'd probably be a bit more.
So out of the overall project, what's the percentage of panels and stuff that's going to extend into the wetland buffer?
I don't have the percentage of the entire site, I'd guess maybe.
How many panels total are, is it? Do you have the plan? You'd have that planned out already.
I gotta do the mental math. It's 5 megawatts AC, so it'd probably be 10,000 panels.
And you don't know how, how many of those panels would be in that buffer zone?
My, my rough guess, looking at this, would maybe be 20%. A bit more.
Excuse me?
But that, that's a rough estimate from eyeballing it. That's something else we can include in the, the full application.
Can you show me from your, from his plan where the main roads are?
Yes, this is a bit too zoomed in. So if you.
You asking for the name?
9D. Yeah, 9D.
Because it says it's not going to be visible.
Right. Yeah.
So where are the roads?
Here, I'll show you the.
Here's the map.
I can show you.
Here, so this, see this row of houses here?
That's better.
So this is the property, this is the existing solar farm, and it accesses 9D.
Here's another copy.
Through here.
So that's.
So it's set back pretty far.
That's 21 Burgers, yeah, right.
It's like this. That's 9D, and that's 9D.
This is 9D.
9D runs.
So this is.
This is where you tell it the same as this.
Stony Kill Road.
Yep.
Yeah, so they're looking at this area right in here, right?
So are there some houses along Stony Kill Road?
Yeah, you got all these homes right here.
So would they be, is this visible from those homes?
21 Burgers, yeah.
These homes over here.
Absolutely, they're here.
No.
Why?
This is, this is all forest that has remained.
The floodplain's going to mess ours.
Yeah, everything's below this transmission corridor, we're not implementing a project. And there is bog frontage here to Stony Kill, but what's nice here is we can use this existing road coming through that project that's already constructed. And then come back and this is where you can see this kind of high and dry shape in between wells, that's what it is.
Yeah, because they go out.
So it's a bit tough to get to, but it's a good, it's a good area.
Yeah, this is the one that's like 21 Burgers is down here kind of, and this is the one, you can't really see it from 9D, it sits back.
Is that the landowner there? Or is that, is that part of them?
That's a different landowner, it's a different.
A different property there. I believe his, his house is over, so he's down in here.
You'll, you'll be digging it up in his backyard.
Yeah, there's been concerns about this. Stuff with other projects. Do you have Tim calling every closet there?
Yeah.
I remember, a long time ago.
Can I just get some understanding, because obviously I wasn't here for the first projects. You said that you have a connection with that company, there's a relationship?
Yeah, this is actually a co-development, so he'll also be the operator of this one as well.
So is this property here also going to be future, involved in that co-development? Are you going to end up tying in here one day too?
So we actually have spoken to this landowner, they're not interested.
Okay.
So.
Any other landowners interested that you already spoke to?
We've spoken to everybody about the projects. These folks and these folks considered it were not interested, these folks weren't interested either.
And so these may wear?
These, I think these two parcels are all the same landowner, it's the Chili's, they were not interested, and we didn't get down here.
So you have no other interested parties along this line that would make this project even bigger in the future?
No, as a lot has a downed, and we tried, because this is an excellent transmission corridor for these types of projects, so we were given permission from the utility for 8 megawatts, but we're like, we'll save it for 5. So we'll keep it up there.
Now, you guys leasing the land for them?
We're leasing this land. The other parcels actually own, my Nexamp, they purchased it, but the landowner for our parcel here is with the Wickelbets, and it's a leased property.
I don't know, I just.
What do you think?
I don't know, I just have a problem with all that wetland in there.
Who's the seller?
Who's in the wetland?
Well, they're not going to, just going in the buffer. They're not going to approach the wetland itself, right?
Like you said, there's a reason.
Yeah, 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 that's why I was trying to fit in with the percentage was that was going within the buffer.
So for roughly 20% in the buffer.
Yeah.
Which is probably.
Yeah, well, actually, it's all the stuff in here within this. See this white dotted, these white dotted lines?
I'm still learning about the solar world here. This is a system that doesn't have any power banks or anything like that that would require water to be cooled.
No, 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 no water cooling. If anything, there's, there's fans on the inverters, we use a specific type of inverter, which we likely would not. Yeah, there's no, there's no.
No battery storage?
I don't believe so, I don't think so. Don't count.
That's an important piece of the puzzle for us.
Pretty sure no battery storage, I'm checking the site.
Parcel access is pretty clear.
If that's a strong preference from the board, then we're happy to forego the battery storage.
There's a code, right? Is it code?
I'm not too familiar with them, but I don't think the solar fields, they have the batteries.
You can add batteries, I think there actually is a battery that was added to the Nexamp project a few years ago, but I don't believe we have that included on our proposal today.
You're talking about that existing?
Yeah, the existing project.
If there is, there's got to be.
They didn't have batteries there yet, did they?
So you're, so and also too is. But you just said that they. Yeah. Well, that's one, one conversation, what is it you're bringing up?
He said they may have put batteries in, in the other one that's exist.
I know they have possibly.
Yeah, they proposed the batteries to go in there, but they, as far as I.
Yeah, they backed, they pulled that off the table.
And it's, I don't believe we have batteries currently included on this, and we're happy to forego that, it's not a big deal whatsoever.
I just hate to be so direct on this question, but you said you had a partnership with them. Do you not know that project, have you not been to that current project at all lately?
I personally have not driven back to that existing project. Yeah, it is, it is a partnership with Nexamp, but we were not involved in the first project, we were driving the second project, but.
Guys, go ahead, one meeting down here.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
No, one meeting. Go ahead.
Any other questions I can answer on the?
I think you also left that too, is there is a wetland area that you are going to kind of cover over completely? Also, it's shown on here, there's a .2-acre wetland.
Yes, which I wish was a little bit more.
So it's not just, it's not just encroaching a buffer, it's also going to be a, yeah, taking out part of the wetland area too.
That, that's correct, and then the, the other area where there'll be some minor wetland disturbance would be where the point of interconnection, where that access road crosses the transmission corridor.
Right.
There is wetland that runs through that.
Through there too.
Yeah, we'll pick the thinnest spot to cross.
Yeah, I mean, you could come up with like an alternate plan too that doesn't touch any of that stuff, that leaves it alone, and see what you can get out of that, but, yes, generally not a fan of messing with the wetlands, especially with something like that, a project like that especially, but.
Yeah, we're trying to protect the wetlands.
Yeah, just come up with an alternate plan, maybe what you could fit in there without disturbing any of that stuff.
I think there, there won't be any option just to get back to this part of the property without some sort of minor wetland disturbance for the access road. I believe there has been some approved wetland disturbance for other solar projects that have been approved. Obviously, we have a little bit of flexibility here, it is a pretty odd-shaped parcel, so we're tight on space, and we will definitely need to, to go into the buffer to some extent, but.
Like you said, the other options are acquire more property back there or downsize the project so it doesn't encroach.
Right.
Yeah.
To reduce the disturbance.
Eliminate the disturbance. It's eliminating, right, well, you're also eliminating a small wetland area as well. You know, and again, that would have to be, even to get that far, you'd have to do an analysis, you know, to find out if that was actually, what the functionality is of that wetland, you know, to see if it, you know, how that's going to be affected, or are you proposing some type of mitigation, but, you know, you're pretty much eating up all the good property out of it, so you really couldn't, you know, kind of, if you were getting rid of one wetland, you'd have to kind of add it to another, you know, and it's, it's not like you have that ability because you're kind of using up all the pieces you can here.
So we have completed a wetland delineation, which we'll submit with the full application, which will be a bit, a lot more specific about what exactly the use of each is. For previous wetland disturbance permits that the planning board has issued, what has been other mitigation that other developers have deployed, where they've impacted wetland directly and buffer area?
I mean, we discouraged, I mean, we've discouraged in the past, you know, being in the wetland itself, you know, but I mean, there is, you know, I believe there is still provision that they can, they can, you know, create new wetland area to mitigate. that they can, they can, you know, create new wetland area to mitigate what you're taking out. So they would, you would have to look at that as well. So you create a new, you know, create, you know, one-for-one replacement. So you could, you know, add it on to one of the adjacent areas, I guess, and, you know, be that much, so you'd be losing panels in that location, you know, to gain panels in this location. I mean, it's almost like you're swapping, which, you know, you might not be able to, you have to do the number, you have to look at it to see if it's going to work.
Did the Myers project do that type of mitigation as well? But that was a solar project that was approved last year, right?
And I don't think they, I know they, I know they, they did go into the buffer in some, in some of that. I just don't remember how much.
There's also a farm field. It wasn't. It was agricultural, man.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was a different...
But it was an agricultural tags project.
Okay. What, did they do sheep grazing or...
No, they're growing...
They were hayfields, I thought.
No, they were, well, I guess with the agricultural tags program, I don't know if they had grown there previously, but with the agricultural tags program, they were looking at like berries, strawberries, things that would do well in partial shade.
Sure.
But it was, it was, it was an agricultural field that was home to solar panels.
So I think we can absolutely...
It's not finished. It's not been...
I remember.
We can absolutely do something similar here with agricultural tags. We have a few different options. We could deploy, obviously, it's not currently agriculture, if that's viewed as some sort of mitigation for the impact we might have on wetland buffer at a minimum. Is that, is that of interest to the planning board?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't being proposed as a mitigation measure. The wetlands in farm fields are treated differently in the town code as far as wetlands.
Sure.
Yeah, there was, no, they didn't touch the wetland in that other one.
No, they did not.
That was off to the side, and they left it wood and everything.
There was some disturbance in the wetland buffer, but it was bad.
Yeah, they didn't touch the wetland.
The way this, the way they lay out in this property makes it very difficult to do the project you want to do, the way these wetlands lay on here.
Yeah, it's a tough shape. It's not, not the perfect square rectangle that we would prefer by any means.
The way the wetlands sit, even though it is in a parcel, I think the way they sit in there makes it very difficult for what you're attempting here.
So on the wetland disturbance itself, I think the small .2-acre wetland, I'm sure we could sharpen the pencil and find a way to avoid that spot altogether. The area that would be unavoidable would be the, by the point of intersection where the access road crosses, that will require a culvert. It would be incredibly minimal, like less than a tenth of an acre or something.
Typically, when we look at wetland disturbance, that's the acceptable form, right? The only way to access this area is by building a bridge over a wetland, then we look at that wetland disturbance and mitigation for that wetland disturbance.
Got it.
I guess what, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm most concerned about is the regular intrusion into the buffer, right? As you, as you work away, work along the larger wetlands on the site, it looks like the wetland buffer is being intruded into consistently along the whole length of that.
Pretty much.
And I don't know what that would do to your financials if, if, if the board's response was, you know, you can disturb the wetland to get into the site to build this bridge, but we don't want you to make a habit of disturbing the wetland buffer across this, what is it, 26-acre site?
Correct.
Yeah, it's almost the whole site there up the corner.
It's regular disturbance into the wetland buffer.
Sure.
I think might have implications to the number of solar panels that you'll be able to get, whether or not the findings work out.
Sure, you're spot on. I think we, there's no doubt we'll have to impact the buffer in some form, or it would not be financeable. There's just no way. I think what, it looks to be that there is some precedent for paneling in buffer area on previous projects. Obviously, we have some flexibility, but I'd love to understand what level of impact in the buffer area will be acceptable or tolerable to the planning board.
I think, I think that a certain amount of that would come from the wetland report and, and the state of the site as it currently exists. The last, the last wetland, I guess the last time we had a solar project, a solar farm that was looking to make disturbance to the wetland buffer, in the clear trees in the wetland buffer, it was an agricultural field, and the trees that were being cut down were five-year-old weed trees in what was otherwise an agricultural field. And that is weighed very differently than like the clear cutting, mature forest in a wetland area that is surrounded by floodplain. I think that that would have a very different impact to those wetlands than the last solar project that we reviewed. I don't know, the last solar project that we reviewed was the first solar project, the first solar farm project that I reviewed under the app. So that's all I have.
Yeah, that's just a bad spot. Unless you knock out 30% of your panels to stay out of those areas.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, it just, it looks like it's one of those where you're, you'd have to take some type of reduction to make this work, you know what I mean? You know, unless you can figure out another way to lay it out, but I, you know, with the wetlands and the, I mean, the flood area might not be a big issue, because, you know, flood area, as long as you're elevated and you're, you know, you're putting small stanchions within the flood zone, it's not going to be an issue there, because then the water can still go up and down without, you know, without impeding the flow of water in a flooding situation. But, you know, putting it into the, you know, going into, you know, cutting into the buffer as much as you are with panels, and then again, I guess that has to do, too, with, you know, if, what would the report, I guess, what would the effect be if you cut down all these trees? How would that affect the wetland area? I guess that's at the end of the day.
Just right.
You know, I think that's what we're trying to...
Right.
You haven't done any real research, just had it marked out, right? So you haven't, has anybody done an analysis for this?
We've done a full wetland delineation.
The full, okay.
Yep. Yes, we've had a biologist on the site mark out the exact boundary of the wetland and prepare a report.
So he just marked out the boundaries?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
So what we've been discussing is the question of access. I'll need to do a little bit more research into it, particularly if you come in as an application. The site is largely wetland locked. You do have a flagpole that looks, you know, I'm assuming it's 50 feet across. It might be wider than that, it might be 100 feet across, but nothing would have been, this log would not have been subdivided this way if that flagpole was less than 50 feet, because it wouldn't constitute access. But due to the geography of the site and the existing infrastructure on the adjacent property, they're not proposing access across this site's frontage. They're proposing access through a neighboring site.
Right.
Given the development of the neighboring site, I think that makes a certain amount of sense, but I will want to do research into the code as to whether or not that fits with the code, and whether or not that, you know, access through the neighboring solar farm would need some kind of...
And you're talking about the flagpole, you're talking about the one that's off of Stony Kill?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the second.
So that's access.
Yeah, the second one.
As the frontage.
Right, okay.
The frontage off Stony Kill, that, those wetlands are substantially larger. So either if we access from Stony Kill or we access from the Route 9D project, either way, it's unavoidable to have to cross some form of wetland to get back there. The impact is substantially, substantially less to go through the other project.
And...
The infrastructure's there.
Pay for much less of a road in order to, you know...
Less road, existing curb cut.
It makes a lot of sense, yes.
Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice location.
Let's treat clearly in order to get to where you want. It makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely.
When the application comes before the board, I want to do research into the question of access.
Sure.
But that is, yeah, that's what we've been discussing.
Okay, okay. We talked a bit about the quality and maturity of the trees, and it's something we'll definitely take a look at. Is there a specific metric the board is looking forward to define what is okay for clearing or not okay for clearing?
So what we would evaluate, we would weigh the impact that you're proposing with the functionality of the wetlands, which would be described in, I don't know who flagged their wetlands, but, or when they were flagged, but that usually comes with a delineation and functionality report, and we would review that. We would look at the quality of those wetlands, what their functionality is, existing conditions on the site, the overall environmental impact to them that's being proposed.
So if we, it sounds like what, if we were to have success with a wetland disturbance permit in the buffer area, to any extent, we would need to clearly demonstrate that whatever our use is of the buffer area is not having any negative impact on the wetland itself.
Yes. That would have to be, yeah.
Yeah, that would...
Yeah. And also address the area, the wetland area that's going to be removed.
Sure.
Yeah, and whether, you know, whether there's the ability to...
Litigate.
You know, to relocate that somewhere else, you know, add it on to an existing or, you know, plus I guess that would also fall into that report, whether or not it's functioning or not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just, you know, there's a lot of, lot of encroachment, let's put it that way. There's a lot of into the buffer areas as opposed to other projects that we've looked at in the past.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think a lot of us would really favor mown down a forest and a wetland to put solar panels up.
I don't agree with you.
I agree.
I think it's somewhat counterproductive, yeah.
Yeah.
You're not currently clearing trees right now?
No, 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 no.
What was selectively cleared? You said some sections were selectively cleared recently?
Yeah, I believe so. I can see if the landowner has a record, and then we can, we can include it.
From the first...
I would think so.
Yeah.
They already cleared some of his property?
I think that the landowner has, has been doing selective logging on it, which is different than...
Yeah, yeah, no.
Because the land is, they're going to lease it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're taking out some of the better trees that are marketable.
Yeah. And I don't have any context on when or what, or...
No, that's, I believe, I believe the town does have a provision for that as well. I think they need a foresting permit, I think, for that.
Yeah, depending on what's coming, how much. So something you could recommend the homeowner to check in with us.
I understand.
Thank you.
I understand. And then the last thing here was, just on that point, on the timber harvesting permit, does that go through the planning board typically, or the building department as well?
What was it, question?
The, for tree clearing?
Building department.
That would be going through us.
Well...
So you, I mean, I mean, you're not, you're not asking for a, for a permission to cut all the trees down right now?
No, no, no.
Oh, I was going to say, because you're nowhere near us giving you that approval.
I'm nowhere...
You gotta get, you gotta make a full submission, all right?
Touching the trees.
It's because we're getting near the March 31st deadline.
Yeah, we're...
You're saying for the owner to get his permission to do what he's doing?
No, for the solar project application, so that whenever the, the project reaches an approval, what, there would need to be an approval for the, for the tree clearing as well. So if that's something that should be included with...
That would be part of your special permit inside plan.
Perfect. That's it. Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, I greatly appreciate the feedback.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so go do your homework, and I guess, you know, take a look at all of, you know, that'll be your choice where you decide to go from there.
Do you think the most appropriate next step here would be another conceptual review with a revised plan?
I mean, I think that we have...
If you want to change, if you want, if you're, if you're planning on changing this and kind of laying it out, you know, you want to do something with layout changes and kind of make it, you know, look a little different, and maybe give us another plan, just a little more, you know, a little more clearer, too, showing everything. We can do it again as a conceptual, you know, just to save you from putting everything in for a full submission.
Sure.
And then you could have those, we could have that discussion at that point in time. You know, we'll give you the feedback, and then it's up to you where you decide to go after that.
Okay.
So, okay?
Yep.
So we'll leave it at that, and that might be the least, you know, the least expensive route for you at this point.
Sure, I appreciate it.
Okay?
Thanks.
All right. Okay. So with that, and that one, we have a, it looks like we have one extension we need to discuss.
Then we do that over there?
Huh?
Did we do that over there?
No, we did the other one. It was two for tonight. So we, we did the one with Kimmel, which was with Mike Bodendorf, that's for, and now we have Riverview Land Company LLC, which had an amended site plan, which is the lumberyard down in Chelsea by the river. They're looking to extend a site plan approval for a year on the construction of, I believe that was two buildings down there.
Yeah.
So...
I make a motion to...
I'll second it.
Or that exception.
Okay, motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So at the end of the meeting here, is there anything that we need to, anything anybody wants to discuss at this point in time?
No.
I think so. I would like to, I would, I would like to go in the executive session real quick to discuss...
Yeah.
The personnel matter. So if we, somebody wants to make a motion to do that?
I'll move that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we just adjourn the meeting first, so we don't have to come back?
No.
No.
No, the meeting has to, the meeting has to keep going.
Should we be recording records after, should we have the opening person's face?
No.
No, because they'll probably just end the meeting right when we're done, so I don't think there's any need.
Yeah, I think we, he doesn't have to continue recording. I think at the end of this, it's going to be, just have a real quick discussion with the board members, and then at the end of, at the end of that, we're probably, there's probably going to be no vote, so. So with that, entertain a motion to go executive session.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.